Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We'll be starting very, very shortly, so if I can ask you to take your seats. Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming. This meeting is open to the public and a warm welcome to everyone who's come along tonight. I'm councillor Simon Clement-Jones and I'm chair of the South Local Area Committee. We have two main subjects to cover this evening. The A61 Chesterfield Road bus scheme and Sheffield Football Club's proposed new developments at Meadowhead. We've got a, I'm hoping, a high number of questions relating to what we've got on the agenda tonight. And this is likely to mean that we won't be able to take individual questions, which is why we've asked you to write your questions down and then so we can kind of group them into those, into areas that we can ask them individually. We may select one person to ask their questions on a theme that's been raised by numerous attendees. And I hope everyone can appreciate this approach in terms of trying to balance here's attending's views within the available time. We've got two questions that don't relate to those two agenda items that we received in advance, which we'll deal with just before we get into the two main, into the two main items on the agenda. And then if there's time after we've had those, then we will open questions to the floor on other subjects. If we are unable to answer any questions on the night, we will provide a written response or request a response from the relevant organisation. In which case, please do make sure to leave us with your contact details with one of the officers before you leave. Before I ask the other councillors to introduce themselves, I'll hand over to the committee clerk, Caroline Cooper, to read out the housekeeping arrangements and cover its sort of business.
Thank you. It's always a few housekeeping arrangements to make. This can now be mobile, another supplement which decides up to this meeting. There's a test plan, an emergency situation is taken. There, assembly for the main area, toilet for the visitors, doors and on the corridors. We seem to enter the public, being live by. I think the current control section act, to collect this webcam, according to the. Be filmed, those images, work desk. One final hearing list, if you want to know.
Just as a matter of caution, I think Jim mentioned earlier that Sheffield Football Club is in Drongfield and I actually work for North East Derbyshire Council, but I have no direct link with it whatsoever.
Thank you. Before we move into the main themes, can I ask the members and officers around the table to introduce themselves? Let's start them with councillor Turpin.
Paul Turpin, one of the green councillors from Gleedless Valley Wood. Alexi Diamond, another green councillor from Gleedless Valley.
Maru Flav, Netheredge and Shallow, Green Party.
Good evening. I'm councillor Richard Shaw, one of the Lib Dem councillors for Beecham Greenwood and deputy chair of this committee.
Diane Owens, I'm the South Local Area Committee manager.
Councillor Ian Orphan, Graves Park Ward.
Councillor Seaver, Lib Dem councillor for Graves Park Ward.
My husband, Maru, councillor for Graves Park Ward.
Councillor Seth Thornton, councillor for Beecham Greenwood, Lib Dem.
Okay, thank you very much indeed. So we have received two written questions before the meeting. One from Alan Jenkins and one from Lili Rook. Do we have either them? I'm sorry, is this the one on Barker's Road or this is this one? So yeah, this is the question. I live on Barker's Road and just at the top there is a crossroads with Union Road going up to Lindhurst Road where a lot of children cross the community, going to different schools and also local NHS centres have residents that they walk down to Netheredge Shops. You'll be acutely aware of speeding in the area and that we have noticed a massive increase on our road in the past few months. I'm very aware that whilst many residents would fully support the whole area being a 20 mile per hour limit, it is unlikely this will happen unfortunately, so I'm trying to focus on specifics and there is nothing to indicate for drivers to slow down at the top of our road, so they often zoom over the crossroads. I actually wrote an article in the Netheredge newsletter because every time I send the kids out to walk to school, I have to really block out the feeling that they or another person will get run over. Due to the fact that we're on a bus, I'm thinking it's probably unlikely that we could get speed bumps, but even a sign asking motorists to slow down children crossing or zebra crossing, et cetera. I feel so passionate about this that I almost want to buy one myself and just direct it, but working for the council and the community youth team, I know there was lots of bureaucracy involved in such things. We've come together on Barker's Road to try and see what action we can take as many of the residents support some kind of action on this and also support anything being done in the wider community. Majority of residents have been able to feed into our road safety group and they support action being taken or at least some attention to understanding the issue. So yeah, thank you very much for that question.
I'm a resident of Barker's Road, so I can actually comment on it as a resident, but not as a councillor. 30 mile an hour zone, probably because the buses go along that road. But we've seen cars driving up Barker's Road at 40, 50, 60 miles an hour because it's just become a very straight run from Barker's Road to Lindhurst Road, which is almost half a mile. So anybody testing their cars out or whatever, they seem to put their foot down on that road. And the biggest issue is because there are a number of families that live on Barker's who have young children, people who have got disabilities, et cetera, and it's becoming a massive issue for the area. And a group of people got together and said, look, we need to do something about this. Why is it that Barker's Road doesn't have a 20 mile an hour speed limit and everything around Netheredge and Brinkliffe does, more or less? So that is the ask. And the other thing that we mentioned was there is a Sid which is a speed indicator displayed on Osborne Road and we're suggesting that something like that is introduced onto Barker's Road as well. I know you will not be able to give me any answers today, but clearly something to go away with. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you councillor Maru. I don't know if the other councillor Maru might say?
Sorry, I'd like to make a comment. Yeah, sure. I've liked communication with Miss Rook around us already. We do have a number of Sids within Netheredge and Shallow. I think one of the issues we do have is that it is, as you said, 30 mile an hour and really should be a 20 mile an hour zone. We've recently had a cotton old 20 miles an hour zone implemented for that, as you missed it out, Barker's Road and Lindhurst Road, given there are 54 20 mile per hour zones in Sheffield. I think it would be prudent to increase one of the 20 mile an hour zones to increase this particular patch.
Thank you for that. And just to say that as part of the South Local Area Committee, we do make road safety very seriously and have introduced recently the temperature mile and hour speed outside committee will take this away and look at it. Thank you. If you'd like to come back. Yeah, if you press the right hand button.
Thank you. I couldn't see that sign. Thank you very much for those contributions. My daughter would be delighted to hear what you said. I think one of the things she picked out as well in her letter to you was issue perhaps about some signs just up that junction. Lindhurst Road, Union Road, Barker's Road, saying children's crossing. I don't know whether those are the sort of things that are put up. But obviously the 20 mile an hour limit thing is going to take some time, but the crossing at that point is good.
Thank you very much for that question. The second question we have is to back to them as well with answers to that question. So now we're moving on to the first main agenda item, which is the A61 Chesterfield Road bus scheme. The bus scheme plans to deliver bus priority along the A61 corridor from Meadowhead roundabout in the south to Sheffield city centre in the north. We'll hear an update on the scheme from Mark Gibbons, senior transport planner at Sheffield City Council, followed by some time for Q and A.
Thank you very much. Sorry, just to introduce myself, I'm Mark Gibbons, senior transport planner for Sheffield City Council. I've been in post for about a year and a half working on this project. Let's see if this is working. I'd have got there in the end. So this is the content of what we're going to talk about. Sorry, Neil, did you want to introduce?
Yeah, very quickly. My name's Neil Byers, director of Notes Bene Consulting, supporting the Sheffield City Council. We developed this scheme alongside Amy Consulting as well.
Thank you. So this is what we're going to talk about today. I think it's worth bearing in mind that I think a lot of noise was made around CRSTS when the project funding first came through and then perhaps there's been maybe a bit more silence than we'd have liked around what's happened during that period. So this will hopefully try and fill in a few gaps between what happened when the funding first come through, where we are now and what the next sort of stages will look like. So there isn't going to be an enormous amount of detail in this presentation, but that will come probably in six months or so, maybe the back end of summer, there'll be further consultation sessions around some of the detail that we've got to with a reasonable amount of confidence and look to get a bit more detailed consultation with both public and stakeholders at that stage. So the prospectus was submitted to government between Sheffield City Council and the South Yorkshire Mayor's Combined Authority in September 2021. This was quite a broad range. CRSTS, City Region Sustainable Transport Settlement is quite a broad remit. So we came to the table with a few sort of outline thoughts about how that could be, what it could look like. They came back to us, bearing in mind this is off the back of Covid and people coming back to work and Bus Back Better was their sort of flagship policy at the time for transport. So they asked us to lean a bit more into public transport prioritisation as a result of that. So £570 million got confirmed for Simca and that includes Badley, Doncaster, Rotherham, Sheffield, et cetera. Sheffield City Council got £137 million of that allocation. £50 million of it went towards the tram renewal. £20 million of it went towards what was formerly known as LTP, if that makes sense to anybody. It's things like local road safety schemes, your 20 mile an hour schemes and those sorts of projects. The Chesterfield Road bus priority was already sort of a known issue for Sheffield City Council, which meant that we could progress that maybe a little bit quicker than some of the other CRSTS projects. There's another three or four quite significant projects which are maybe a year or so behind in the evolution, progression, development of those schemes. So £10 million of the allocation was put towards Chesterfield Road to look at how we can improve bus priority along that corridor and try and get more people using the buses. Presentation says it's objective led and it's quite a tricky term. What I'm basically trying to say there is that it enabled us to come up with quite an extensive list of considerations for what we've come across as issues that could improve bus priority. And that's a result of engagement with Philak previously, with stakeholders and other groups which we've discussed so far. So where we are now, the strategic case has been completed. So this is basically just trying to identify what the issues are, where some of the issues are, what kind of tools can we use to solve issues. So things like making the bus infrastructure better, making bus stops more attractive to use. Can we change the times for bus lanes? Can we introduce bus priority in traffic signals? The sorts of things that, you know, we could use as a relatively generic fix to try and make things better. Outline business case stages to sort of to build on that a little bit more, understand some more of the data, see if some of these issues are resolvable with sort of infrastructure fixes. So that's kind of where we are now and then the full business case is when we get to do more detailed design work, start to firm up our ideas in terms of what our deliverables are going to be, understand a bit more about the cost and basically what it's going to look like on the ground. So that's the stage where we're really going to want to talk to a lot more people, get some more feedback from the community. And I think for us it's important to understand that the people that know the most about some of the benefits and the things that we want to achieve here are people that live in this area, the people that use public transport often, they're the operators. So that's a really important part of the feedback loop for us. So this is essentially a summary of the SBC where we kind of got to with some of the high level objectives that we want to achieve. This is a little bit more information on some of the things where we got to with some of the issues that are outlined and how we think we can start to go about trying to tackle them. So we'll come back for more consultations, as I said before, maybe in late summer, early autumn. So when we talk about improvements to bus stop infrastructure, we're talking about lighting, real time information displays, raised curbs, anything like that, which will actually make the stop easier to use. Bus priority signalling, some of the traffic signals along this corridor have already got bus priority built into them, but they're from previous systems and they don't all act as a corridor. They just pick up a signal bus and will try and progress it through the junction as easy as it can. Whereas I think the technology has moved on a little bit now. We've got systems in the back office which can match a bus which is going down a particular avenue to its timetable. Tells if it's running early, running late and just try and coordinate it a little bit better. So some of the tech that's in there just needs upgrading to be a little bit more modern, a bit more fit for purpose. The bus lane hours of operation, that's a really interesting point that we got back from some of the stakeholders, some of the public transport operators. I think it's possible that the times for the bus lanes could be changed to be a bit more effective. Look at things like the school rush hour, Saturdays and Sundays when they've got particularly busy periods. So again, it's a case of look at what's working, try and review it, any changes, make it better, make it more attractive. Healy Road Junction is just trying to make it a little bit more operationally, make it operate a little bit more efficiently than it perhaps could do, than it perhaps does do, sorry. Bigfield Road Bus Stop, that is to take it out of the layby potentially and put it into the stream of traffic. I think the buses currently experience delays in trying to re-enter the flow. So looking at options to try and make that movement a little bit easier for them. The Woodseats A61 junction, again, this was flagged up with stakeholders. Again, it's just to try and improve flow and not only make it more attractive for buses, but hopefully make it easier for everybody to get through. Woodseats traffic flow, again, this was raised quite frequently. And perhaps this is one where we need the most input from residents and stakeholders about what people think might help to move traffic a little bit more efficiently in those areas. It's one of them quite tight, it's one of them we've got parking on both sides and it's just trying to understand how we can make it work as best as we can. Green Hill Main Road Junction, similarly just trying to make it more efficient again with a view to public transport interactions. Meadowhead Roundabout has been flagged up lots of times for lots of different reasons, but what we're looking at as part of this project is the southbound entry to see if widening the entry lanes might give us a little bit more benefit, both in terms of public transport movements and general movements. And that was also flagged as a safety risk and some of the pedestrian movements around there as well don't necessarily lend themselves to people being able to get to a bus stop safely. There's the underpass there, which I think has got perceptions around antisocial behaviour. So we've explored an option to take that crossing, put it at grade as in have a sort of at grade crossing. The St James Retail Park is the final piece on the list that we've got as things stand. I think the issue there is mostly regarding people eastbound trying to turn right into the shopping area if the provision is sufficient for them so that it doesn't block back into the main carriageway and all the vehicles trying to do what they need to do. So the next set of communications and engagement that we're looking at will be, there'll be a website which will be coming up in the next few weeks that'll have pretty much a lot of the information which I've just covered as part of this presentation. There will be an address on there where people can write to us and give us their thoughts, feedback, comments, et cetera. The email address will be connectingsheffield@sheffield.gov.uk. Although I'm sure Diane might be able to point anybody in my general direction if they want to submit any comments or thoughts off the back of this or if anybody goes home and they have any questions they didn't quite manage to get off. So yeah, as previously said, summer autumn 2024 for public consultation. So we'll look to do some drop in events, we'll look to manage in the press, social media, we'll be updating our website quite often. Similarly with stakeholder consultation, we'll go back to them and we'll look to publicise how we're going to manage traffic during construction when we're a little bit further down the road, so to speak, in 2025. So just harking back a few slides to where are we now. So we're drawing to close the OBC stage, which we'll be submitting over the next few, next couple of months. Then we'll start looking at the full business case, which is, as I've said, inclusive of consultation, trying to get a little bit more meat on the bones, trying to finalise exactly what it is we're going to go out and deliver. Construction, the timeline for that largely depends on what the civil engineering works end up looking like. I'd be surprised if it was longer than a nine month construction period, but I stand to be corrected depending on how everything plays out. That's the end of the presentation. I think it's worth just mentioning before I invite queries. We did become aware of the Sheffield FC proposals quite late in the development of CRSTS Chesterfield Road. We kind of got to a point with the OBC was reasonably well developed before they sort of came to the table to have a conversation. As much as I've been amiable to what we're trying to achieve in terms of public transport provision, the timelines just didn't really add up enough for us to not consider it as a risk to delivery because the timelines kind of don't marry up particularly effectively. So I think as long as we retain ownership of our own programme of works, I think it's a big risk out of our, that we don't need to have to manage. But any trips the development does generate will obviously be included in any traffic modelling work that we do as part of our assessment. I feel like I've ended on a negative tone there, but not to worry. So yeah, I'm happy to field any queries that anybody might have about the proposals, things as they are, what I've covered today.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much indeed for your presentation, Mark. We'll now move into the Q and A element. We'll now move into the Q and A element. When you ask your question, we'll pass you the microphone, please clearly state your name and if you are representing a particular group or organisation. And just to say, we did pass around some slips with written questions on them. If you do have ones completed, if you could wave it in the air and someone will come and collect it for you before the next question. Do we have anyone who has a question for Mark? Martin, then I'll take you. No, sorry, because it needs to be on for the webcast.
Were the shopkeepers consulted? I do remember many years ago there was a similar scheme and shopkeepers were saying then that if you make everything through route, it will diminish their trade because a lot of shoppers are just off the cuff and they're just pulling and park. So has that been taken into account with the latest plans?
Other schemes that have happened, development of the scheme, so shopkeepers and others all the way down that corridor will be part of further engagement, but we've already been listening through the work that's been done to get to the stage where we're at. So they'll always be part of that process and we're not looking to kind of remove parking through this scheme. So that opportunity for people to nip into those spaces will be retained through the scheme.
Thank you. Got a gentleman at the back there?
It's about the Sheffield F C. I'm the chairman of Sheffield Avenue Radio Club. We've been in Sheffield for hundred and three years as a radio club. We've been at the Transport Club for twenty three years, maintaining the two bowling balls.
I'm sorry, if I just interrupt you, sorry, this is about the A sixty one corridor. We're moving on to Sheffield F C in the next item. Perhaps I can ask you to save your question till then?
Yes.
Thank you. And I've got a gentleman there and then yourself.
Is that Tom? Following up the previous person about the shops, are there any parking spaces and laybys going to be lost as part of the scheme? And secondly, very much support Green Hill Avenue, Green Hill Main Road, improvements if at all possible because it's a nightmare getting out of Green Hill Avenue and then the roundabout itself is a nightmare.
So the precise number will be configured as part of the detailed design process. So as part of the corridor, particularly Woodseats, there's a piece of work looking at accessible parking spaces which might need more space to be provided. So while we're not intending to remove laybys, the actual space available for the number of cars might change, but that level of detail will be progressed through the detailed design stage and those plans will be available for people to keep back on. But as part of the scheme, there isn't intention to significantly.
Please.
... down towards St Thomas's Church where they put in a traffic lights and a sort of a bus lane and then cars having to stop, and it was just a disaster, very expensive disaster. And they had to take out the traffic lights and then bring it back to two lanes with a bus lane all the way down. Can I check that you do know about that previous disaster?
Yes, I weren't involved in it, but I'm very reliant on it.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions?
Well, at the risk of sounding a bit naive about all this, I'm a little bit unclear about what the purpose of it is. Is it to have the existing traffic flows become easier? And I could understand that, but, or is there an additional purpose in it to displace some of the traffic? Like, I mean, the bus routes are set, so the number of buses will not change going through. But what about the other traffic, the cars and the vans and so on? Are you calculating that some of that at least will be displaced onto other routes? And if that's true, if you envisage that would happen, are you making an assessment of what that would be?
Thank you for your question. The answer is yes, it's all being considered. We have a very complicated traffic model which has a bit of a snapshot of that whole area, well, that's the whole of the city region. So when we come to do our full appraisal, we'll look at what happens when we make changes and what happens to the full flow of traffic. If it does displace any trips, we'll have a good understanding of how they're displaced and what their new route might need to be. And if it does have any sort of negative, substantial negative impacts on journey times, then it will tell us that we need to either provide mitigation off site or what we need to do to manage that more effectively. So the sort of crux of it is that we're trying to encourage more people to use the bus. So part of that is to make it more punctual, more reliable, more attractive. So when we, I make the point, it's quite an easy point of reflection, but about trying to marry buses up to their timetable a little bit better. So if a person knows that their bus, you can see it on the sign, is going to be due at quarter past five, you can see it at quarter past five running over the hill and it's on time, it's on schedule, then you get a bit of confidence in it and people start to use it a little bit more. So it's being able to programme the signal so that, you know, if it's running two minutes behind further back in the network, it can get to that bus stop for quarter past five and people can take confidence in that. So yes, there is a little bit of taking it out of your left pocket and putting it in your right pocket, but I think we need to understand, as you rightly say, what the impact of that has to everybody, to all road users. So yes, this is the short version, it is being considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a back?
Thank you. I think memory first.
It's just a quick question about bus fares. So what's the impact going to be on bus fares? Because typically what happens, you have public money going into these schemes that end up in private sector coffers and bus fares, there was kind of a few years ago until the two pound cap came in, people were handing over notes on buses and paying for fares with cars because of bus fares just became extortionate. So how's that going to be managed and what's the impact on the everyday person going to be who uses these buses?
Local and direct. I wouldn't expect there to be an immediate or short term fluctuation in the price of a bus fare. The focus of the scheme is to try and make it, to improve the infrastructure, to make buses more attractive, you know, taking a step to increase fares would be a backward step and it's that one that we're trying to encourage us apart.
I'll just add to that from a slightly broader context. I think so the South Yorkshire Mayor or Combined Authority are looking at the way that buses are governed, which will probably have more of a role in terms of fares than this particular capital project. I think the thing that this project will do is help manage operating costs for the bus operators so that they can afford to run the route cost effectively. And if you can run it cost effectively, that helps manage pressure on fares. So while the two pound fare cap has been, is in place, has been extended and extended again, while the scheme don't have a direct impact on the level of fares, it will help to maintain the affordability of running those services from an operator's perspective, which can help pressure on fares. But it's obviously down one corridor in one part of the city, so you kind of need to look at it from a wider network perspective and all of these individual schemes providing that overall confidence to operators to manage the cost of running buses. So I guess that's just a wider point around the context of buses and bus reform in the area.
Thank you. I've got a gentleman there and I think there's somebody just next.
Can I ask what you're going to be doing to improve cycling infrastructure, make it safer and getting more people cycling along the A sixty one or along that route?
So what we've been looking at is the opportunity associated, the extension of the Sheaf Valley cycle route. So rather than trying to put buses and cyclists down quite a narrow corridor at the same time, trying to find ways to provide a good, quiet, direct route in parallel to that corridor as well, making sure that cyclists can make a direct journey and it's down a route that's dedicated to them. So learning from the opportunities that have been created through the Sheaf Valley route so far and how can that be extended along that corridor? And by that is to identify, are there other opportunities along the corridor that can be brought forward that can promote cycling as well with further funding that might be available to the city council?
Thank you. I've got a gentleman just there?
Are you looking to address and have you got the budget to tackle physical necking points? I'm thinking about places like Healy Bridge where buses are forced into the traffic flow along with cars.
Thank you for your query. Civil engineering budgets go less and less far as the years go by. Unfortunately, I don't think we're going to have the budget to tackle that particular issue. I think our ten million pound budget would get eaten up extremely quickly with that
Thank you. If that's all the questions from the floor, I do have, I think, a councillor, I wanted to ask a question.
Thank you, Chair. I mean, my queries are as a result of talking to lots of people around Woodseats in particular. I mean, these roads were actually designed hundreds of years ago when traffic was not a problem. And I think people have already touched upon the subject that whenever you try to restrict traffic in any one bit, the displacement will start to happen in other places and then the problems will start elsewhere. But one of the main concerns that I have is shopping centres like Woodseats, which we are very concerned about, local shopping centres are starting to struggle quite a lot. And I think you've already answered partially the question of there will not be any displacement of laybys, et cetera, that will directly affect that. But have you ever considered or would you consider using compulsory purchase powers to actually buy some land and create small car parks for shoppers to stop off for a short while and do their shopping and come back to it, which has been quite successful in some other areas of the country where they've used that? That's my one question and observation on that. Moving on, so if I ask them all together, then you can answer them all. Moving on to Meadowhead Roundabout, again, this is of great concern to not only Graves Park, but also Beechie from Green Hill. And I know we're going to be talking about Sheffield Football Club a little bit later on, but the traffic there is extremely bad as it stands. And I'm sure any feed, feeding into that, albeit on days when there's matches on, that's going to only exacerbate matters even further. And has there been any, and I know you've started to touch upon that subject and maybe it's not the right place to just ask that question just yet and let Jim do his presentation. But I for one can't see how we're going to improve traffic flow if more traffic is going to be coming in as a result of the football club, bearing in mind the capacity of the roads that are already there and the air quality of the roads is going to be compromised quite strongly there as well. So those are the few issues and questions that I have, I just can't, I know you're trying to do the best you possibly can, unless there's radical change, I think we're getting bottlenecks in quite a lot of places. And I've said quite a bit there, but just if you could just elaborate on that a little bit more, that'd be very kind of you. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. So okay, I can field a few of these. In terms of compulsory purchase for car parks to enable extra car park capacity, it is something that we looked at. It was one of the options which was raised during previous consultations as a means to, yeah, try and make the area more attractive, a bit more pedestrian friendly, which again can encourage more bus trips. So that came on to the list for things that we could consider alongside all the other interventions. So these come together in a report called an Options Appraisal Report, which is basically a long list of everything that we could do to try and resolve the problem. So that actually came up quite high on the list. There were a couple of quite specific options, one in particular which was potentially achievable, but I think it's one that we'll need to dust down when it comes to consultation because it was there or thereabouts at the line where we've essentially got enough funding to take it seriously. Because as I'm sure you're aware, there's sorts of things, as well as, are not particularly cheap, as well as the timeline that C P O needs to run down to be executed properly in legal terms. So short answer, yes, it's something to explore, but we'll perhaps bring that back to the table at a more suitable point. Meadowhead Roundabout, yes, you're absolutely right, it does struggle in terms of its design capacity for the flow which uses it at certain times. We don't have enough funding to completely crack that nut. We can probably do, we have enough funding to do part of it, to do the bits which we think will have the most impact on public transport and that's to be achievable within the funding package that we've got. In terms of inequality, I know it's quite a hot topic for Sheffield as it is everywhere these days. Equality is very difficult to monitor at the best of times. I think if you make a slight change, you probably can't record an effective result for the best part of ten years with the diffusion tube systems which are employed to actually effectively monitor any changes. So I mean, it's the good thing about public transport is you know that one extra person on a bus is probably one less person on a car. So on a very pragmatic level, there is a clear benefit, but the actual data and results are very difficult to quantify.
Thank you. Councillor Turpin?
Before I go first, so yeah, I just wanted to quickly address the question about bus fares first of all, because there is currently, the South Yorkshire Mayor or Combined Authority is considering bus franchising, so I would encourage it for people who want buses back in for public transport. I think one of the issues with public transport in Sheffield, what you can't get away from is aside from the buses being prohibitively expensive, they are unreliable precisely because there isn't priority for bus routes, for buses over parked cars. If you have parked cars, you can't, buses are forced into the main traffic, which means that they are unreliable and they're not going to be on time. So I think really you need to accept that. If you want buses that are reliable and you want effective public transport, better road safety, less congestion, more, more people using buses, so less, like better air quality as well because there's less cars on the road, then you really need to give priority to buses. That'll make them more reliable and it'll mean that more people will use them. Because currently, if we go the other way, buses are in a death spiral. They become less reliable, more expensive, they cut more services and it just gets worse and worse. So we are in a climate emergency, we need to recognise that we need to prioritise public transport, which is far more efficient than private cars. You can't have exponential growth of private cars as we have seen over the last fifty, sixty years, you know, there isn't, our streets weren't built for these, for having cars everywhere. You know, I would like to see more about the issues of safety addressed in terms of cycling. I cycle down Chesterfield Road quite a lot, I also cycle on Avon Dell Road and London Road, Exeter Road, they're all really dangerous roads precisely because you have to go, you have to cycle, not in the bus lane, but in with the rest of the traffic because of parked cars. Enforcement is also really important. My question that I would ask is because there is often this perception that getting rid of some of the park that getting rid of some of the parking would be bad for businesses. But is there actually any evidence that less parking equals less shopping? Or on the contrary, is there evidence that more people using public transport, cycling and walking in local areas actually has benefit for local businesses? Because people go to more than one shop. So that would be my question. Thanks.
Thank you.
It's an excellent question and unfortunately it's one that I don't have the data to back up. You could argue the toss with passing trade in a number of different ways. And the way that we'll come to a conclusion on that question is when we come to talk to shop owners and the people that operate businesses along that corridor and try and get a better feel for how they think perhaps best suits their business needs. I think is probably going to be the way that that needs to be resolved.
I mean, you had three minutes already of your time. So I think if I can ask, I've got councillor Turpin, councillor Shaw and councillor Thornton.
Thank you. Thanks for coming and talking to us today about this. And I was, I joined the group of people when we walked down the length of Chesterfield Road initially, coming up with ideas and spotting problems. And I know that £10 million sounds like a lot, but it's not really when we're looking at making alterations to like a two-mile stretch of road or whatever it is. So I really appreciate that there's many small interventions intended to make a big difference. And Chesterfield Road has woeful bus reliability, as does Abidale and Ecclesall. And congestion is caused by cars. The way to get rid of cars is to improve public transport. You know, it's really simple, isn't it? Yeah, sorry. So to reduce the number of cars, reducing congestion, improve public transport, straightforward. Just to comment to the chap over there, bus lanes are great places to ride bikes if there's nothing parked in them. Nice and wide and no cars. They're great. So bus lanes and bus lanes with longer hours are really useful. Talking about cars and shopping, cars don't spend money, people spend money. And shoppers on Abidale Road and Ecclesall Road were surveyed a couple of years ago. The majority of people who were shopping there arrived by means other than cars. And even though, talking about Woodseats specifically now, because, I mean, we'll know how awful it is to drive through and we avoid it if we can. If you drive to Woodseats intending to park, it's still not very likely to get a space. You know, you might get lucky, but usually you don't. Because you find that spaces are taken up by the shopkeepers, the people working in Woodseats. They're not there for shoppers, they're there for the people who are working there. So I think that as part of this work, part of this consultation, I really think that putting a bus lane through Woodseats is absolutely something that should be done. And I know that that's not something that could be delivered within this budget. But the feasibility of it could certainly be delivered and the surveying of shoppers could certainly be done. And, you know, have a look at York or the more. If you want people to go shopping, you take the cars away and the people come in. It just makes absolute sense. And really finding that data that will really help people's perceptions change is vital, I think.
Thank you.
So thanks for these points. Really helpful, I think. Probably the point for us to make is that I think through this piece of work, it's been identified that £10 million isn't enough for this corridor. And actually, I think the point you made there that through this type of engagement and ongoing consultation, probably perhaps focused around the Woodseats areas, what else could be done on this corridor? Whether that be more bus priority, more cycling interventions, more that creates the type of space that people want and getting that balance right for all different types of people that need to travel by different modes over time. So I think on behalf of Mark and the City Council, I can agree with that point about taking on board the feedback from consultation to say what more is needed along that corridor to ensure that businesses remain vibrant, that people can access them and it's a really effective corridor for all different types of users making all different types of journeys.
I think just to add to Neil's comment as well, I think as we're bearing in mind that this is CRSTS1, there are likely to be subsequent phases of CRSTS with funding attached to them. How they're managed will undoubtedly be different. But I think it's just want to bear in mind that this isn't the only bite of the cherry that we'll get to improve public transport along this corridor.
Thank you. Before I bring in councillor Shaw and Thornton, there is another question from the floor. So if we can then bring it to a close and move on to the next item. Oh, okay, sorry. You decided not to bother. Okay. Councillor Shaw?
Thank you. I'll try to be brief. So first, just a quick comment, really pleased to see possible improvements to Green Hill Avenue Main Route junction, which is a big concern to local residents. Often gets faced with me. Since mid-2019, residents have reported more than 60 collisions there. Unfortunately, because people tend not to report collisions to the police or to insurers, the council only has about 14 collisions on record. So I'm really hopeful that whatever proposals come through improve the situation there because it is definitely a hotspot for collisions. On the area around the St James' Retail Park, do you have any kind of examples of like possible changes that might be made round there to improve traffic flow around the retail park?
Thank you. Again, it's another question of how far can we go with the budget that we've got available to resolve that issue? I think we've identified one issue which is providing a particular holdup for public transport movements. I think if you were to look at that junction a little bit more holistically with a slightly broader remit and a larger funding allocation, you'd probably look to do a little bit more than what we can achieve with what we've got available.
Just after that point, if we have time, just to say that I think some of the issues associated to the management of traffic are off the lap of the highway. So fortunately, the City Council can only do so much to mitigate the impact of traffic that effectively backs up on certain of the main roads. So I think we're looking at options that can effectively manage the congestion that's there as best as possible and accommodate it. But I think some of the issues are associated to the internal operations of a private car park, which City Council won't be able to resolve. But I know that changes have been made. I don't know how much good effect that has had. And I think continue to engage with the landowner to see if there's any more that can be done to kind of look at the internal operation of a car park as much as what the City Council can do with the highway element of that issue.
Thank you. Councillor Thornton?
Thank you, Chair. I think I'd like to touch on a couple of things. The fact that this has, you know, got to the stage that it is, is really great. I'm really pleased to see it when it goes to public consultation. As local councillors, we do survey quite a lot and we knock on quite a lot of doors. And we try our best to reflect, you know, what you guys say to people like Mark and Neil and who, you know, to make sure that your voices are heard. And I'm sure that we'll be a part of that as it goes out to public consultation as well. So we'd really love to be a part of that. I think I'd probably slightly disagree with my colleagues further down the bench. I don't think this is just a city for the fit and the able. And we need to make sure that, you know, I work with disabled people outside of councillor work and not everyone can get on a bus or use public transport or walk or cycle. And so we need to make sure that this is a city that, you know, isn't... We don't think of it as just a one-size-fits-all box. People have a variety of different personal circumstances. And it's about, as you were saying, about making sure that all journeys are easier. But as we go forward and making sure that bus transport is easier for the people that can and is affordable for the people that can, as we're looking towards this going forward. I know we've touched a little bit, as councillor Roof touched a bit on air quality earlier. Last week, I spoke to a lady that lives at the bottom of Annesley Road, just on the Green Hill Avenue stretch. And she's quite concerned about air quality as it stands. Particularly as we think about the places where traffic gets displaced. When Meadowhead's really busy, people tend to go up Green Hill Avenue, don't they? So it's always very busy as well. If this is going to make a good impact and just have good data, looking at what the air quality is like now and comparing that to what it's like once this is in place, I think would be a really positive, hopefully, thing for people to see. So is there any plans to actually do that as part of this process and what might that look like?
Thank you. And I absolutely support what you're saying about the accessibility of all trips. I think that's a really important note to make. In terms of air quality monitoring, it is a little bit of a dark heart in terms of how it's actually executed because of the duration of monitoring needed to gauge whether or not a scheme has been successful. So, you know, take the scheme as it sits, for example, and say it's got a 10-year monitoring life. During those 10 years, more people might buy electric cars. During that timeframe, more people might ride bikes, they might take a different journey to work. Hopefully, more people will catch the bus. So it's very difficult to gauge the direct impact of one particular scheme. And so I'd love to tell you that the answer is yes, we're going to do specific monitoring of that. But it will get wrapped into the wider air quality monitoring, which the council undertakes as a result of other factors.
Okay. Well, thank you very, very much indeed for that comprehensive overview and for answering so many questions on that. We will now, and just to say, I mean, I think my colleagues touched on it. But as I say, in terms of improvements to road safety at the top of Green Hill Avenue, Green Hill Main, that can't come quickly enough. And changes to, well, sort something out of St James' and the Meadowhead Roundabout again, really does need looking at. So I'm hoping that those three things might be the head of any programme that you do come up. So now we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the proposed new development of Meadowhead from Sheffield Football Club. And we'll hear an update from Jim Lomas, who is the Regional Director of DLP Planning on their proposed development. And again, we will have time for Q and A afterwards. We'll ask or ask if anybody who's submitted a question in writing, we'll ask them first. If you can wave any questions that you do have and we'll come and collect them from you. Thank you. Can I ask you to turn the microphone off?
Is that okay? Yeah, good evening, everybody. Just before I start, I will be showing a series of slides. And some of the slides have quite a bit of detail on. So if anybody wants to come nearer to the front, you might be able to get a clearer picture of just what we are going to be talking about. It's entirely up to you. But if you want to do that, I think it might be beneficial for those who have got an interest in this particular scheme. Okay, thank you very much. And well, first of all, my name's Jim Lomas. I am the Regional Director of DLP Planning. We're based in Sheffield. Just for my sins, I have been living and working in Sheffield now for, ooh, well over 35 years. Pretty familiar with this site. I don't live a million miles away from this particular site. I'm very familiar with the locality. I'm very familiar with some of the issues that people have picked up on. I'm very interested in some of the concerns picked up on the highway matters down the A61 corridor. And hopefully, what we are looking to put forward tonight is basically a progress update on where we were when we consulted this community back in December. I do recognise a few familiar faces from that particular event. So the purpose of tonight is to really explain the changes that we've introduced, the amount of research we've undertaken and how we're looking to propose and move this project forward. I think before I actually go on to the project, a little bit of historical background to this. As many of you will be well aware, Sheffield Football Club is the oldest football club in the country and has been a fairly nomadic club in this particular region. It has moved around in various places. And about six, seven years ago, I was approached by the club to say, you know, where could they relocate? Could they come back into Sheffield? Because their ambition was to bring the home of football back into Sheffield. And we looked at various options. We were exploring sites, particularly down Olive Grove Road. We've been looking at other sites throughout the city. And then Olive Grove Road kind of fell away and then suddenly Meadowhead came to the fore. So we started exploring Meadowhead as an option. And I'm sure as local residents, you're all very familiar with Meadowhead. It clearly is a long-established sports facility. It's had cricket up there, it's got football up there, it has a range of sporting activities and uses. And we felt that was a suitable site in which to accommodate the new facility for Sheffield Football Club. As the project evolved, Sheffield Eagles have come on board and we felt there was an opportunity for a ground-sharing facility and enhancement to sporting facilities at that site, over and above what Sheffield FC were looking to initially propose. So I've moved forward. The general proposal for Meadowhead is to basically provide a new sports stadium, 5,000-seat capacity, a facility that's capable of being used for both rugby and football. Also can be used for a range of other sort of sporting and leisure activities as well. We're also proposing all-weather sports surfaces. For those of you who've been involved with sport or have had children playing sport over the years, and I've certainly been actively involved with it as both a parent and as a sports person. The football fields up there have been a bit boggy, the cricket field, all due respect, is possibly not the greatest of surfaces. But we're looking to enhance the facilities out there. Certainly, we're looking to relocate the cricket field to a new, towards the Bailey Barracks, for those of you, again, who are familiar with the area. And certainly looking to enhance the range of cricketing opportunities down there. Indoor nets as well, which is obviously something which we're lacking a little bit of in this part of the city. We're also looking at an indoor sports arena, a multi-games area where you can play sort of badminton, netball, basketball, great facilities for things like disabled rugby, wheelchair rugby, things like that. So we're also looking to facilitate that as part and parcel of the project. Now, during our preliminary discussions with Sheffield City Council, something that was put forward to us was the provision of some park and ride facilities, which again, we are looking to accommodate actually within the site. And again, that also links in with the discussion that we've had earlier on this evening about improving public transport opportunities and access to enhanced public transport facilities as a whole. We're also, we're looking at onsite car parking and temporary car parking arrangements to facilitate matchday events, and I'll come on to talk about that in more detail. But the facility also offers things like changing rooms, men's, women's changing rooms, facilities for sort of a community space, linking it in with things like the Sheffield Football Club and the Sheffield Eagles forums, which are activities outside of the normal sort of sporting events. So clearly, there's an opportunity to diversify the range of facilities on that particular site. Landscaping, cycle links, other ancillary accommodation will be going in there. And one of the key factors, I think, is also access changes to this particular site. I'm very familiar with the current access on this site. We know where it is. It's not a very good position. So we're looking to make some changes to those access facilities. I've just illustrated this and if, would it be okay if I move towards the... Hopefully, you can still hear me. Certainly. Here's the existing facility. We're looking to relocate the cricket field to the corner, help towards the Bailey Barracks. We're looking to re-close the current access that's... Is that okay? Well, look, to re-close this particular access into the sports grounds, which I think we all recognise is far from ideal. We are looking to put a separate access further down the main road, purely serving the cricket field and putting the main entrance into the facility off the A61. Roughly where the proper position where the current Pelican Crossing actually is at the moment. The park and ride facilities will be located adjacent to the A61. The all-weather sports facilities, which actually have sport to play in far more inclement weather conditions than we currently can see. This will not be boggy, this will be drained, this will be versatile. The football field, the softball field will be located in the corner where the cricket field is at the moment. The arena located relatively centrally within the site, alongside the cricket field and absolutely car parking facilities on site now here. Thank you. Now, the proposal. Part of this scheme is not just the Meadowhead site. In order to facilitate this club, for those of you where Sheffield Football Club are located down at the coaching horses down in Drumfield. So we are looking to put in two planning applications simultaneously. And the Drumfield site is there to facilitate and to raise funds to facilitate this facility. And the Drumfield site is there to facilitate and to raise funds to facilitate this facility at Meda Head Sports Ground. The Drumfield site currently comprises of the football ground, and we're looking at residential development and a mix of accommodation, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom accommodation. We're also looking to retain the public house in Drumfield as part and parcel. We're not looking to develop into the woodland areas or go over the ridge of the site, which I can explain to when I show you the plan. And we're looking to facilitate access into the Drumfield site just south of the public house, which actually works quite well relative to the signalised junction down at Reeds Lane, Stubbeley Lane and Sheffield Road. As I've already said, money's obtained from the sale and the redevelopment of the Drumfield site will be channelled into the Meda Head Sports Complex. And that, to ensure that money is channelled appropriately, a section, a planning Section 106 obligation will be put in place to ensure that money is actually sent to Meda Head. It's not basically trouted by the club and spent on jumpers for goalposts in Graves Park or anything like that. So, just very quickly, and a point of less interest to Sheffield, because obviously it's a mile down the road, but just to basically outline this. For those of you who are familiar with the Drumfield site, we have the Coaching Horses down here, we have the car park, and basically the football field is located in this position. This is the current design which is emerging, which we'll be looking to put separate planning application in in due course, for the woodland areas, the stream and beyond the ridgeline, further to the north, none of that will be developed. The football ground, the car park will land just to the west. Right. Actions to date. I think for those of you who came to the consultation back in December, we said we would be carrying out further activities to progress this particular project. Now, so far, what we have been involved with in the last three months is certainly we started off with engagement with the local communities. We've engaged with the community here, we engaged with the community down in Drumfield. We've also been liaising with the local planning authorities, both Sheffield City Council and North East Derbyshire District Council, over the respective projects. We've been in regular liaison with Sport England over the chops and changes that we're looking to make to the facilities. We've also got ongoing engagement with the various highway authorities as well over some of the suggestions, ideas to address much of the feedback that we've actually received so far. We've also undertaken a presentation to the design panel. That's primarily related to Drumfield. It probably doesn't affect Sheffield too much, but it's just an independent design body who are looking at how we're approaching this whole project, and they've given us feedback as well. All of this feedback will be reported within the planning application in due course. So it's all going to be publicly available. We're being as transparent as we possibly can. We've also been undertaking research and reviewing some of the... Sorry, that's probably badly worded, actually. We've actually been undertaking research into the highway movements. Those of you who drive around the area may have seen pipes on the road. We've been carrying out, collecting data, so we know information is there. And also, we've been reviewing the feedback we've got from statutory consultees and the community to help the evolution of the project as it develops to date. Yes, I think the rest of it's probably been more bureaucratic, to be quite frank with you. So, public engagement. For those of you who came along, for those of you who participated back in December, we've undertaken two consultation events, one held at the Meda Head Sports Ground, one held at Drumfield. What was very interesting with the Drumfield consultation was that a lot of people came and were expressing more interest in Meda Head than actual Drumfield. So I think we knew where the main focus of attention actually has been. And what I've done, I've done a summary of the main issues that we have received from feedback from the community. Now, I've only shown, they are the top issues that we raised. There's quite a list of issues, but they, the ones I've raised there are the number, the number-one issues that we have picked up on and we have been looking at them. Obviously, the capacity of the highway network, you know, that was a major issue for the community. Parking on local roads, these are matters that, you know, we've been looking into. Parking provision on the site, again, we'll come and talk about what we're looking at, how we address those matters. I think something which is a little bit out of our control, but really is a hot topic for this community, is the retail parks, St James's Retail Park. I think for those of us who experience it, and I experience it personally, I know what it can be like. Other issues that we've been looking at, and we're certainly investigating, the noise impact of the stadium, air pollution. We've already talked about air quality tonight and touched on that particular matter. Again, these are factors that we're all looking into. Highway safety imperative. And there's a range of other matters. I'm not going into the other matters because those points there were far in excess in terms of comments than any other comments we got, you know, who's picking up litter. All valid points, but have highlighted the main issues that we've picked up from talking to the community. So what have we been doing? Now, this is why I said if you wanted to come nearer to the front, I can talk about some of the technical issues that we are working on and we are looking to discuss with the council and put forward as part and parcel of the application for Meda Head. And clearly, one of the big issues, again, I'm going to move over here. Thank you. One of the big issues is Meda Head Roundabout. I know, you know, it's a roundabout that is acceptably contested and does have its issues. We have monitored this. We have got evidence on what the roundabout, how the roundabout is working. This roundabout is not liberal, if you could use those technical terminologies. We, on the other hand, have now got to come up with suggestions which will address this matter. And our highway teams, our consultants, working with Sheffield City Council, talking to Sheffield City Council, looking at the data available, are looking at measures to actually improve this roundabout by not going into any third-party land, not actually sort of bringing any additional costs in to the council, working within land that we've actually got control over to make this a better, more efficient roundabout. Now, the modelling that we've undertaken so far, and I'm not going to talk data tonight, you'll have all that data when we have it all publicly available, it's still being modelled, it's still being finessed, but generally, we're talking about doing several things here, all of which are in the public highway or on our side. The first of which, obviously, is the junction down to the south. We're looking to make sure that works technically, which we're happy with. We're putting a cycle lane running all the way around the edge of the site, but we're also looking to amend the geometry of the roundabout coming north of the A61, pull the roundabout into the site, improve the ability to queuing along Green Avenue, Green Hill Parkway. We're also looking to pull the roundabout back, for those of you familiar with it, you've got the toilet block, the old issued toilet block. That grey line there is the current alignment of the road, but pull that back a couple of lanes. That allows more freedom to the road across here. It also allows opportunities to avoid the queuing as you're approaching the roundabout from the west. It also allows greater separation between the current junction if you're heading south, don't Meda Head is coming down past from Morrison's, for example. You've got a greater degree of separation across there. For those of us who know it now, that distance between there and there at the moment is quite sharp, it's quite short. As a consequence, you've got to be quick out of the block sometimes coming after that particular roundabout there. The evidence that has been prepared and the evidence that our highway team have looked at are looking to ensure that this roundabout will work more efficiently than it currently does now, and that the impact of this operation here, assuming a full 5,000-seat capacity is in operation, that the roundabout will work when this is operating at 5,000 precisely as it works right now. We can't, when the roundabout, when it's operating, we cannot get it any better than it is now. But that will be better for the majority of the time throughout the year. Now, bearing in mind, Rugby League is going to be the main driver for the 5,000-seat stadium. That's going to be the busiest. They play 13 home games a year, and assuming all 13 home games are at 5,000, that's going to be on average four hours. We're working on the basis of 15 matches a year. Let's say they get two cup matches or something like that, or another Rugby League match that takes place. That's 60 hours a year, where that roundabout, assuming that's operational, will actually be at the same capacity it is now. The rest of the time, it will be improved. So going back to the points that we're talking about earlier on, this will hopefully free up that roundabout, free up some space, make it more efficient for the lion's share of the year. And even when the rugby is taking place, it will be no worse than it currently is for a period of about 60 hours in any one calendar year. So they are being discussed. That has been discussed with Sheffield City Council's Highway Department. The finer details, I'm not going to go into, but generally we think this is an enhancement to that roundabout. Okay? That's one of the main points we're going to make. The next one. The next one, we've all talked about the current atmosphere, we all know this, we all know it's a pretty disastrous junction down here. We are looking to, A, continue the cycle lane running in the east direction, and effectively propose some slight rearrangements to the geometry of the road, but also for a signal control junction there, which hopefully will address some of the queueback, some of the problems, some of the challenges getting out, particularly heading back or heading south from Greenhill Avenue. We know that's a challenge. And finally, the Beauchamp Roundabout, further to the south, again, we've been looking at. Now, that isn't in Sheffield, that's in Derbyshire, so that's another authority to work with. Again, we're only looking at some slight geometry arrangements and slight highway widening to improve capacity, because our travel plan, we'll come with the application, is directing the fans who come from outside of the city, that the job's brought round about, around the outside, avoiding St James's Retail Park to come round the site, round Beauchamp Roundabout, head north and get into the facility off the A61. So they are the highly improvements that we are looking to actually facilitate to make things better at this particular site. There we go. Now, the second, I want to say the second biggest issue behind the actual impact on Meda Head Roundabout is the parking arrangements at the site. Now, what I've shown there is a 10-minute walking distance from the site, from the general areas. It comes all the way from the church, from Greenhill School, all the two low edges, down parts of Baitmore, down to the Norton, down to the Greenhill area, full stop. The part and parcel of the proposals here will be, A, to provide onsite parking on match days, we'll be using the car parking spaces as permanent, as shown. We're also looking at a series of measures to introduce temporary car parking on the cricket field on match days only. Now, we have spoken with Meda Head School, we have spoken with Kias, to look at whether we could utilise and share the facilities on this particular part of the land at the moment. At the moment, there's no appetite from Kia to do a... You may be aware, it's PFI School there, and Kias will be departing their interest in that sort of seven years, something like that. This is going to be two, three years into the nature, so the temporary car park is going to be used for at least a four-year period. We will continue to liaise with the school to see if there is further interest in the future, but we can accommodate the car parking for main matches onsite, parking temporarily on, like boarding, like you get on many, many other cricket fields like Old Trafford, during main matches, and that will be managed onsite. To avoid any form of onsite parking, off-street, on-street parking, on-street car parking in the wider area, we are looking to institute a traffic parking plan where all residents will be given a parking pass or permit. That will be provided by the club, just sticking in your windows, and therefore anybody who's parking on these areas during match days will be subject to penalties, fines, whatever. We have wardens in place. That's part of the traffic parking management system, and that's what we're looking to put forward. That will help to prevent people, let's say, for example, you're playing League Rhinos, and some cars will come down from Leeds and they park somewhere out there and they're annoying the residents. If they've not got the pass in the window, they're going to get fined. Equally, as part and parcel of the ticket sales, all tickets will be given an opportunity to park on the site. Okay? There will also be information telling them the routings and where they should park and where they shouldn't park, and what are this are. That's all part of the traffic management, and that's all part of the careful consideration of how we manage this site and how we make it work. Right, as far as timescales are concerned, we are looking to put a full planning application to the City Council in mid-March. We've got a lot of information. We're still finessing one or two pieces and pieces. We're still getting a little bit of research coming into fine-tune areas on the particular scheme. There will be a further statutory public consultation exercise where the community will be notified. You will have a right to make your formal comments to Sheffield City Councils in 21-day period. That period, if you don't put your comments in in the 21 days, if you put them in later, the application's not going to get determined for six months, they will still be considered. Okay? So any of your comments and thoughts, please put them into writing to Sheffield City Council. We, as a practice and as a project team, will continue to liaise with Sheffield City Council. We already have undertaken that consultation, we've already undertaken dialogue, but obviously any further feedback, any further sort of comments or any issues they want us to look at, we will continue to work constructively, cooperatively and diligently with the authority to address any points that they actually make. Hopefully, the application will be reported to the planning committee. I suspect, and I'm only speaking from experience here, we're probably going to be talking about September at the earliest. I wouldn't want to put the application to planning committee in August, because a lot of people have had a holiday, and therefore, you know, it's not a great time to present an application. And I think by the time I put the application in, in March or towards the end of March, the consultation period, the feedback, the chops and changes, July is looking very optimistic. So I think September is probably a realistic proposition to put this application to committee. The Drumfield application is looking to go in, and we were talking about an April-May submission. The Drumfield application will follow the Meda Head application, and that'll be an application for North East Derbyshire to consider and determine. Now, clearly, the Drumfield site raises other issues altogether in applying terms. It's a green belt site. We've got to demonstrate very special circumstances to North East Derbyshire. The purpose, as I've already mentioned, of the Drumfield site is to raise funds to facilitate and to put into the Meda Head project. And as I've already said, that funding will be controlled through a Section 106 obligation, so there's no spending the money on totally irrelevant things or things which have nothing to do with that particular project. If the Meda Head application is determined, and if, whether members support it or not, that's our elected representatives here, if they are minded to approve the Meda Head application, then the Drumfield application can proceed. If the Meda Head application fails and falls, the Drumfield application, I think, will also be withdrawn or would fail, because there's not enough very special circumstances in technical terms to necessarily justify it. I'd be disappointed, but that's how it's going to run. In the event that Sheffield and North East Derbyshire are minded to approve both applications, they will be conjoined through a Section 106 obligation to ensure that the benefits of Meda Head, the benefits of Drumfield are interlinked. So therefore, things such as community use agreements, accessibility to the Meda Head sports facilities, the transport improvements, the social housing provision at Drumfield are clearly delivered in the interest of community and public gain. So that really is where we're at at this particular moment. There's going to be a lot of supporting information going in with the application. We've got everything from air quality reports, we've talked about earlier on, we've got ecology reports, tree reports, community use agreements, we've got lighting assessments, because one of the concerns that has been picked up is lighting from the floodlights. We've got noise assessments which have been undertaken, we've got drainage assessments, we've got flood risk assessments. There's a pile of reports from basically about that high. They're all going to be publicly available, they're all going to be there for you to inspect and obviously comment on. Tonight, I'm not going to be able to answer every single question. Unfortunately, my highways team tonight threw other public consultations in Shropshire, so I couldn't bring anybody else along to answer the technical questions. But if you have questions, I'll do my best to try and answer them tonight for you. If there's anything I can't answer, please make a note, we'll have it in writing, and we'll see what we can do and get some comments back to you. I'm happy to provide the feedback through the committee or the team here, that's not a problem. We're quite happy to try and potentially even have another public engagement meeting. I'm not so sure what more I can really tell you, but if you feel you've got something that we've missed or you think we haven't considered, then please let us know. This is not about developing a sports of a Meda Head that has closed barriers to it. This is about providing a facility for the community. This is about providing a facility for the community, people to use, links with the school, I think we've already had discussions about that with the school, how they can use the facilities, how community groups can use it, how the forum can get involved with it, the Sheffield Football Club forum, so people can engage with the club. So it's not like probably some of the football clubs you may be familiar with in the city, where, you know, it's a closed shop and the barriers come down. This is about engaging with the community and you and us all being part of it to use it for everybody's benefit. So I think that is about it. I have got some graphics as well, which I'd like to show you, just, I may be more interested in a boring old set of words on screen, but it's the second presentation. This literally is hot off the press from the architects in terms of some graphics, so it just gives you a flavour of what we're going to be looking at, and again, if you can pull these images. There you go. Again, it just shows, here on right, it's showing how floodlights, a lot of the detail of the floodlight, we're still working that up, the precise detailing, the stands are pretty well worked up, the car parking layouts are fairly worked up, some of the landscaping has got to be amended slightly to facilitate the cycle lanes, uh, these are things we're still working on. There's a lot of graphics as well, oops, no. There you go, just some more images, you see the cricket field down towards the Bailey Barretts, you can see the cricket car park area which is separated from this, there's no through route coming off the A sixty-one to wind your way down through there, that will be bollarded off there. Clearly, from an emergency point of view, if there's an accident or an emergency, yes, we'll allow people to flow through the site, because obviously that's important from a safety perspective, but the overall objective is, that's the main entrance, that's just the entrance to the cricket field off there. I've no idea what's happened here. There we go, the computer's frozen.
Okay, thank you. I have had some written questions, already put in on parking, air quality and general objections to the proposals. I've only got two that have people's names on them. So I don't know if Karen Olinshaw wants to actually ask your particular question, or if you'd like me to read out what you've written. Okay, so the first is on air quality. It was mentioned that it was problematic to immediately assess air quality at ten years was given as a time period. As a person who daily walks through the Meda Head area, I can tell you that the air quality during rush hours is horrendous, this is a fact, it is at its worst on cold mornings when the fumes are held down and can make you cough, and I don't have a respiratory problem. I know I'm not alone in worrying about the environmental impact of the increased traffic that will be inevitable if the stadium does go ahead. It is disingenuous to say it will be managed. I'm not sure that's actually a question, I've been more of a statement around worries around air quality.
If I could probably respond to that, if that's okay, certainly, we all recognise the issues of the continued growth and the demand for the combustion engine and air quality is an important factor. Um, it's something we are going to undertake an air quality assessment, I think it's already been pointed out. Whilst the engines are probably cleaner, more efficient than they probably were, there's still an increase in vehicle movements, but the vehicles themselves are changing, and where we could be in ten years' time, with the coming of the electric car, anybody's guess. However, with the proposals that we're putting forward, we hopefully are going to free up Meda Head Roundabout to allow that to actually work more efficiently, to avoid vehicles queuing, standing, belching out emissions, because if vehicles are moving, then hopefully it's more efficient and people aren't standing. So I'm not an expert in air quality, but I'd like to think that the movement and the changes to opposing actually make it a more efficient roundabout, and as a consequence, improve air quality. But we are having a separate report prepared, and obviously that will be publicly available.
Thank you. I do have one question, a very simple one, which is asking, what parking provision will be built into the facility? And it leads on to Karen Olinshaw's question. So this leads to asking about parking provision for events, there will be not enough room. Greenhill Main is an urban clearway, so no vehicle should be parking there, but they do, and vehicles are not moved, this is because there aren't staff or resources to police this. How will you guarantee that no parking will be allowed on the main road or the grass verges outside the sports ground? How will you guarantee safe access for emergency vehicles along this route, especially if cars are illegally parked?
Yep, valid point. Certainly, as far as the management plan is concerned, this is all included in the management plan, there will be wardens ensuring people do not park on those particular areas. The amount of parking that's being proposed actually onsite, we can accommodate the requisite ratios of parking to seats. Currently, it's one car parking space for every six point five seats, so therefore we need eight hundred spaces onsite at full capacity. That can be accommodated onsite through the use of temporary car parking and existing car parking. The ratio is a standard which is set by both the City Council, it's a standard which has been applied to the rugby league facility down at Attcliff, it's also a ratio and standard which is set by FIFA for sporting facilities as well. So the requisite parking is a recognised ratio, and we can accommodate that. Part and parcel of the off-site car parking and fear factor, which I fully understand from the community, that is all part of our traffic and travel parking systems, a management plan, there will be a point of contact, there will be wardens provided at every match, and anybody parking without a permit or with a permit indicated in their car will be subject to a fine, that's part and parcel of what we're wanting to do. Equally, any people travelling from further afield, I don't know, the Wigan pie eaters, if you're playing Wigan or whatever, or Huddersfield or the Hull supporters, you know, they can all come down here, they'll be notified when they're buying their tickets. This will be a ticket-only operation, so when they get their tickets, they'll be indicated where the car parking goes, and also how they get to the car parking, and they'll be allocated a space. So if they park on street, they'll be warned, they'll be fined.
Thank you. I do have a question, it's got no name on it, and I do suspect, I know the answer to this question, but is there anything that could be said at this meeting that would prevent the proposed developments?
That's not, that's not, that's not for me to decide, that's for you as elected members.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, so we'll get open, forward to questions in a moment. So I've got the final question on this subject from Reg Jones, who I think would probably like to make a statement as well. So if I perhaps read out the question you've got, because I do have some information in terms of what the process will be and how people, once the planning application goes in. So the question is, will the plans for the new stadium be put up in the local area so that people can see them and send comments to the council on the planning application? They should be put in the local libraries, Greenhill, Low Edges and Wood Seats. So I do have some information on what will actually happen once the planning goes in. The council's online service enables documents to be viewed online. For those without IT access, there will be the option to view at local libraries, Greenhill and Wood Seats, as well as at Houghton House on Union Street in town. Staff will be present at those venues to assist navigating and understanding the website service, for those who would find that to be helpful. The case officer and/or planning staff members will be available to help ask any questions on the details of proposals at any point. And the application will be assessed through the course of this determination process, and ultimately, a recommendation will be put to the Planning Committee. As part of the Planning Committee meeting, there will be an opportunity for individuals to speak and to raise comments and to input into the decision-making process at that stage, as well as in the written forms through the website and other ways, and obviously convening wider discussions like these if required. So if I could ask you to, perhaps, so we've not got a great deal of time left, so if I could ask you to be as brief as possible, your question, unless, have you got anything to add on the process?
Just on that, I've seen a reason why we couldn't make plans available to be left at the sports facility, at the transport ground, if people wanted to go up there, we could make those available. I think you're right, in terms of the accessibility, every document, and will be quite a lot of documents, will all be very accessible on the council's own website, so yeah. If there's any difficulty or problems, then please let us know, we'll do our level best to ensure that, you know, we can make sure the community know about it. Equally, if there are any community representatives who want to see access to the plans, then just let me know, and we can make sure they're presented so they can be as accessible as possible. We wish to be as transparent as possible on this one.
I think in terms of transparency, a very easy thing to do, and it's something I've been discussing with councillor Belbin, the leader of the council, is to have the plans available at these libraries. The information you've given us there basically enables somebody to show somebody else how you can get on the computer system of the council and look at a small plan on a monitor of that and all the other plans. So the plans need to be out in the community. A further point, I'd just like two further points, is if there's eight hundred parking spaces available, that's two thousand four, you say three people in a car, two thousand four hundred people. Where are the other two thousand going to park? And if you have to show a plan which includes the area I live in, with areas that are distinctly going to have to have these passes in their windows, then that clearly shows there's going to be on-street parking, and why should I have to put a pass in my window? And lastly, having looked at the plans and photographed them at the December meeting, it's clear that the stands have got a lot of space in between them, you can see on that right-hand side there. The stand on the right-hand side is quite short. Sheffield Eagles, as you say, is the sort of, they're the sort of mover on all this lot. Sheffield Eagles wonderfully, just nearly be in Wembley in a few weeks' time. They want to get up into the Super League, the average attendance in the Super League is nine thousand. Having looked at those plans at the last meeting, you can get an extra three thousand five hundred on new stands extending the existing ones. So we may end up with a stadium, not at the moment, eight thousand five hundred seats. So my view is that anything you're putting forward at the moment, which is a disaster for Meda Head, is irrelevant. But I do emphasise the need for consultation and the plans in the libraries, and full-size plans, not having to look at your computer screen. Thank you.
I think as far as the plans are concerned, I don't have a problem with making some plans available for distribution, quite happy to do that, we can have a chat with the architects and get a full suite out there. I'm not so sure about a full suite of every single technical report, because they're just the actual colour plans, so they're visible, AO size, something of that ilk. Yep, that's not a problem at all, I think that can be arranged, and I can arrange that with the planning officers or the community group, that's not a problem. So far as the issue of your car parking, we have based our car parking ratios on the size of the scheme before us, we can facilitate the precise car parking ratios on the site. Your point about a future stand, that's not before us, that's not for consideration. If you were to propose something about in the future, depending how it pans out, clearly then you've got to raise the ratios of car parking. We have to consider that at the time, that is not before us, that is not before the council, that is not worked up here, so we can't consider that, that is not. If there's a planning, if there's a planning application comes into the future, then the council will consider the extra seats against the availability of parking. If they cannot provide the additional seating and they cannot provide additional parking, it doesn't get approved. The parking permits are a mechanism, sorry, yeah, yeah, the parking permits are a part of a suite of measures.
Okay, thank you. I've got an indication from the back there, a last question, and as I say, we are running out of time, so I've got another one there, and I'm looking around to see if there's any further questions, another one, another one there, so I'll take these three and four. Thank you, sir.
I'll just make it quick. All the fighting and work you've done, and all the hard work and all the planning and everything, how come you don't know about Sheffield amateur radio club? When we was working with Kia and the council in two thousand and three to find us some land where we could have our clubhouse, we do deal with scout groups, community groups and all like that. We've been maintaining the bowling greens up there for twenty-four years, we've invested forty-eight thousand pounds on that side, and hundreds of thousands of pounds on equipment what we use. We promote Sheffield worldwide. So how come you don't know about us, that we existed on that side?
Well, thank you very much, yes, well, I'm aware of you, I've been alert to you, I know about you. So as far as this is concerned, I don't know what arrangements you have with the club, they are separate matters between club and yourselves. As far as the club is concerned, this is the way they want to go forward. Whatever arrangement you've got, if you have any rights to stay there, that is something I have not been brought to my attention, they are separate matters, I'm afraid to say.
Right. Now, going back to day one, before we knew about the FC, we got to know about the FC, and Bob, which is the transport manager up at the club, said, the football's staying where it is, the cricket's staying where it is, the bowling greens cost too much money to do. Now, we maintain them, so you're okay, no problem. So I put a planning application in to Bob at the club, saying, if we fenced the two bowling greens off, we've got support from portacabin for modular buildings, which will give us our training rooms, meeting rooms and radio rooms, so we can share that with the community. We don't use it all every day of the week, so we can offer the community groups with facilities at a minimal cost, because we're not there for profit, we're there, like, as I said, we promoted Sheffield for hundred and three years in Sheffield, worldwide, America, Canada, Jamaica, Japan, all over. So they all know about Sheffield, and we've taught to hundreds of thousands of stations, we've taught to the International Space Station, and Scouts, Gill Guides, Alum University, we've done events there, we've done events all in the centre of Sheffield, we've raised money for the air ambulance, we've raised money for Gambian Water Trust, and nobody knows, and you didn't even know about us.
Well, I think as far as we are aware of you, if you are looking to stay there, and again, it's down to what arrangements you have with the club, and I'm not alert to any arrangement that you've got, if you can say to me, I have a title deed and I'm entitled to stay there for the next fifty years, I don't know, I've not, that's not been brought to my attention. But if I can complete it, if however, you actually wanted to stay there, we can raise this matter with the facilities operators here, if there's scope to provide something within the space available, which there may well be, there's going to be a lot of community space in this building, if that's any use to you, then we can consider it. But at the end of the day, I can't guarantee you're going to stay there, I can't guarantee that, that's a separate matter between your arrangement and the current club.
Thank you. I think you've had an answer as I say, I think it's really taken outside this meeting and up with the club to progress if there's any further.
I'd like to have a chat with you after this discussion. I'd like to have a chat with you after this this discussion.
Okay, tha- thank you. I've got a question here.
Just a quick one.
Sorry, if I can ask you to wait for the microphone.
Thanks. Um, have you considered a park and ride on Jordan Thorpe Parceway?
Have I considered? Well, no, we we have not. We didn't really want to put a park and ride to start with. It's something that has been. Developed through our discussions with the city council. And it was put to us that they would like to see, the city council would like to see a park and ride at this particular location. So we considered it as part of the overall planning merits and we can offer. An opportunity to deliver some spaces which I, and again, I'm not standing on people's toes here, but I think. Where we're offering the park and ride, I think offers some substantial benefit. And because if buses are heading straight down the A sixty one, people can pull in, park, buses can pull in and then it's quite an attractive proposition. People want to use it. But going down to Jordan Thorpe Parkway, whereabouts on Jordan Thorpe Parkway were you thinking about?
No, um, you mentioned that you were going to be diverting incoming traffic for this facility. Along Jordan Thorpe Parkway.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
And I wondered whether rather than having cars coming all the way to this facility. They could park on Jordan Thorpe and then you organise buses to take them here.
Couple of things, Ellen. The the routing that we were talking about is if you're an away supporter and you get your tickets to come. Let's say you're coming down from Leeds, you're a Leeds Rhinos fan or something like that and you're coming down. We're going to direct you as part of the travel plan and the the package, not to drive past St James's, not to add to the congestion there. But get to Jordan Thorpe Roundabout, head down Jordan Thorpe Parkway, down to Bo Shaw Roundabout and then head north up the A sixty one to turn into the site as a left in. Okay, if you're driving that way. Going back to your other fact, which I haven't raised and it's a point I did want to raise and I probably overlooked it. Part and parcel of the overall travel package for supporters is that we'll be looking to arrange shuttle buses from Doran Totley. From Sheffield City Centre and from Dronfield Bus Station, uh Railway Stations. Because knowing the routes, if you're coming over from the Manchester area or a Salford fan or a Wigan fan or whatever you might be. Doran Totley might be an attractive proposition to get off the train there, as might Sheffield City Centre. So we are going to be running shuttle buses that coincide with trains. The same is true with Dronfield Station. If you're coming down from Leeds on the Northern Line, which I use quite a lot. I'll get off at Dronfield. We'll have a shuttle bus there that pick up supporters if they're on specific trains. This is all part of the measures we're trying to do to aid dissuade people to use the car and use more sustainable mode of transport. But also make sure they're actively detailed for away supporters and home supporters for that fact matter. And they could come and use alternative rather than driving and adding to the congestion. We're doing all we can to create more sustainable environments.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Just a a few points. Why are you. Uh, promoting rugby and not Sheffield football?
Promoting them both.
Well, all your fixtures and everything like that seem to be based upon a rugby club.
No, I think that the the concern you're picking up is that that the rugby is probably going to be the greater generator of of supporters at the moment. Sheffield Football Club are not getting great crowds. Um, certainly with Sheffield Football Club's crowds, they're probably getting in between about eight fifty, eleven hundred. If we have that kind of capacity, there's there's more than ample car parking on site. Rugby is likely to be the bigger generator, particularly if the Sheffield Eagles do get into the Premier League. Okay, that's where Eagles would like to go. I made no, no, no secret about that. If they get into the Premier League, and that's if. They obviously will have to have a better stand, better facilities. It's limited to five thousand. That's what they need. If they do get to the Premier League, they need a five thousand seat stadium. We've got to make sure that we can accommodate that within the site. We've got to make sure it works. If it doesn't work, then we have a problem. And this is what we've been investigating. So Sheffield Football Club and the Eagles, a joint shared facility. It maximizes the use. It's located, in my professional opinion, in a very sustainable location. A quite a high profile location. It's very visible. It aids the facilities. It aids the use of the facility as sport. That's my take on it.
Thank you. Um, there was talk about a museum of football. Is that still in the plans?
Yes, that's, I don't know whether you've ever had the the privilege of going down to Dronfield, but they've got. Some portacabin full of silverware and some quite impressive football memorabilia. Um, it's worth a look, but part and parcel of this because Sheffield Football Club is recognised as the oldest football club in the world. It's they 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 effectively wrote the rule book somewhere down near Olive Grove Road from from my knowledge. It's bringing football back into the city. Personally, I think Sheffield probably missed a trick when Manchester got the museum of foot, National Museum of Football. I think it should have been in this city, in my opinion, because you look at Sheffield Club, Hallam, Stockbridge, United, Wednesday, Chesterfield. They're all some of the oldest football clubs in the country and this is creating something which is hopefully going to put Sheffield on the map, in my opinion.
So it's still on the cart then?
The museum?
Yes.
The music, there will be a facility in here which will have a gallery, display area and some information. I don't think it'll be anything like a York Railway Museum in terms of size and scale, but there will be something that will be there for people to come and visit. Uh, as an aside, I've had meetings over the years down at Sheffield Football Club and the number of students I've seen. Turn up on the bus, they know it's there, they're asking questions, they're quite surprised at what's happening at Dronfield, they're quite disappointed, to be quite honest with you. But then you show them what it's all about and it is, they kind of get it and it isn't a big club. And Sheffield Football Club do not have ambitions of wanting to play with the Blades, although they might be very soon, like they're playing the other night.
Anybody can play the Blades.
Yeah, I was there as well. Yeah, less said about that, the better.
Shouldn't be afraid of that.
No, I'm afraid of it at the moment, yeah. Less said about that, the better. Um, but they, that they're about grassroots, they're about bringing on Sheffield footballers, they're about having a traditional football inside. That's what they want to do. And personally, I think it's very commendable.
And have you plenty of accommodation for coaches?
Yes, there are coach parking facilities, if I can, again. We've got a range of facilities to take to the south side of the, south side of the site. Um, that would accommodate visiting coaches, away fans, coaches, things of that nature. Uh, and clearly if we can encourage more away supporters to come on a proper bus, like football fans do. We've got some opportunities to put them in there. And again, we've got some flexibility where we can loan the coaches if necessary.
Thank you. That concludes my questions.
As I've locked out, thank you. Um, so I've got, I've got a question there, um, and I don't see any more hands. Um, so we do have some more business to conclude before the end of the meeting. Um, so, right, so I've got yourself and um, and then gentleman there.
Um, just a couple of questions. So first of all, just to make you aware, on my road, people are already selling up. So rather than being vocal and opposing their plans, they're just deciding to leave. Um, so that's a statement. Question, if this is all about community, then why bring in Sheffield Eagles? Why not just keep it to Sheffield Football Club, which might be more acceptable? Second question, you talk about sixty match hours per year. But as this gentleman said, if you decide to expand, if you've got a five thousand seat stadium. Even if you don't expand, what's to stop others then using the facilities and then that sixty hours continues, starts to increase, becomes more and more. Um, and then in terms of the fines and the parking, again, I agree with what the gentleman said earlier, why should we have to have. Parking permits and also the fines come after the event. So we've already will have suffered people parking on the verges without permits where they shouldn't be. We've probably had miserable weekends and with these kinds of numbers, you find one person, the next person does it and the next, because people will. Chance it, we see it on car boot sales, I can't even reverse out of my drive. This is, it's too big. This is a residential area. This belongs somewhere like Don Valley or something. Fine if it was just Sheffield Football Club, but you've just taken it too far.
Thank you very much. Um, clearly I can't comment about people moving houses and that's that's their choice. There might be multiple reasons for that. Certainly so far as the car parking is concerned here, we are looking to provide car parking which aligns with national, local, recognised parking standards. Okay, so we are meeting the standards which are used to assess these type of projects. So far as the the parking plan is concerned, we are looking at a a a suite of of measures. Uh, options to try to ensure people who are not coming to the facility. Don't park in the in the highways or park outside your house. And I don't know where you live, but I'm happy to find out where that is and we can look at that in more detail. I think those measures go above and beyond what is normally required. I am not anticipating that this will generate uh on street parking to the extent that people are are fearing. From experience. I think your fear of any other activities taking place on the site are subject to other arrangements. For example, there's been rumours going around that this is going to be a music venue. I've heard that before. This is not before us. This is not the plan. If somebody, if this is operating and say five, six years down the line, somebody comes forward and says, I want to put. I don't know, Def Leppard to come and play or something like that. Um. That's subject to a separate licence, but if there's obvious concern, if there are park issues, you won't go ahead. That's that's out of our control. The council will have control over those matters in due course. That is not before us. I am looking at a sports facility. It is purely the Eagles. It is purely Sheffield. Both clubs have their respective community uh offers. Sheffield Football Club offers its various sort of. Outside football activities, as do the Eagles. That's all being presented as part of the planning package. The precise activities they do, I can't listen tonight, we guess we're gathering that information, but they have their own sort of. External links with communities and that's part and parcel. There will be, as I've already said, links with the schools, so the school can come and use us. There'll be links with private clubs. We've talking, we've got one more school to talk to, Henry Fanshawe, probably a little bit off the beaten track and Henry Fanshawe actually has got quite good facilities already for sport. Probably doesn't need to use this, but certainly opportunity to link it with Med Ahead School and expand the range of sport, recreational activities. I think is something which is going to be beneficial. And I accept this area has changed fundamentally in the last forty years. I remember coming to play rugby against Med Ahead and Rollins, well, Jordan Thorpe and Rollins. And you know, it was a lot, we've got, we've got the St James's, we've got J C T, we've got the schools, we've got the leisure centre. Things have changed. There has been more put into this area. I recognise that. But what we're trying to do here is ensure that we put something in which does not exacerbate the situation, in fact, if anything, makes the situation better. And I think that the opportunity for the roundabout is something which is, in my opinion, and I use it virtually daily, to be welcomed. But that's my view. I respect your comments. Happy to have a chat.
Okay, thank you. And then for the final question.
All right, yeah, it's just going back to what you said about the air quality in uh Med Ahead and Chesterfield Road. I'd like to point out that there are two contributive factors to the problems with trafficking on this road is the bus lane. That runs down from Morrison's, which if you want to turn left onto Abbey Lane, you've got to sit in a row of traffic for ten minutes before you can turn left. Because you're not allowed into bus lane. However, more and more people driving cars use the bus lane because you don't enforce anything there. And the second problem you've got is the number of traffic lights going through Woodseats, at least half a dozen. And once you're through there, it's clear. So your proposal to put. Bus lanes all the way through won't solve anything because buses have got to stop at traffic lights anyway. So you seem to be putting a sticking plaster over a problem that's bigger than that.
Okay, I I think that was a question about the A sixty one, was it? Oh, right, sorry. So um, if if I can just uh thank, thank Jim very much uh for for coming along. Um, and answering all your questions and and doing his um presentation um on this. Um, and as I say, for for answering the questions and and we will, uh, there will be a um. The the questions and answers to all those will um will be in the minutes of of the meeting. Um, Mark, I don't know if you if you caught um that question. I do have another written question for you. Um, that came in um after the event, um, but someone, if you could address that, thank you.
Uh, thank you for your question. I I caught the first half of it. So the enforcement of bus lanes is something that we could absolutely look to do as part of the C R S D S project. Uh, it's not, it's not complicated. It's quite straightforward and affordable within within the funding package. If that's something that you would support.
I I think, I think the first question.
Take away the freedom of choice of a lot of motorists that don't want to use public transport. I've got a bus pass and I will not use public transport because it's absolutely garbage. So then I'm forced to sit in the car and then bus lanes force me to sit in traffic jams, which in itself create more pollution. Instead of getting traffic through in vehicles with motor vehicles, you want to get people in visual buses chucking out rubbish. And then, but you blame us. And then you come up with this, an excuse about global warming. When Britain contributes naught point naught one percent of the total worldwide carbon dioxide. And what goods, you know, when you've got China chucking out the majority of it and India and USA. What difference is it going to make to Sheffield or Britain? Not a jot. So it's a weak excuse about global warming and climate crisis. We cannot affect that. It's the major countries around the world that are producing all rubbish, the ones who want to aim it at, not people in Britain that are doing their best.
Um, th- thank you for your comment. I'm I'm not sure if I caught a question in there the the second time round. Um, but I think there is a, you know, there is a logical point in there about making sure that a road network is fit for purpose for everyone to use.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, so I do have um another question um on the, on the A sixty one. Um, it doesn't have a a name on it unfortunately, but um, it says, I note that two private consultancy firms have been engaged as part of this long running process. Um, A, does appropriate expertise not exist within Sheffield City Council? Um, what proportion of the allocated budget is to be spent on private companies during the development phase? Um, is the highways department content with the relationship with Amy regarding securing reasonable costs for implementing works? Okay, I'll, I'll put the name on it as well.
The the best of good questions. I I can't really comment on uh contractual issues with Amy. I think that's uh not something, I'm sure you're aware of this. It's not something that I can really field a query on uh as part of this session. In in terms of um what allocation of the capital budget is likely to be spent on scheme development and third. Party, private sector organisations as part of that work. Um, it is a difficult question. There there is a lot of reliance on transport planners and people that can write good bids to be able to secure money to make these sorts of things happen. And I think there is a cost that goes alongside that. So the 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 better we can make these applications, the more likely we are to secure funding to be able to deliver them in the first place. So there is a little bit of tail wagging the dog in terms of, um, you know, the 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 local authority has to be intelligent enough to engage the private sector. To do a good job to make sure that it can meet its own needs. So there is a, you know, there is a strategic under. Um, I'm not entirely sure what the percentages will end up being in terms of how much of the capital allocation is spent in scheme development. Um, I think that'll have to be part of a closed down report that we look to do, but certainly we'll look to spend as much as we can on the actual civils and works on the ground. I can't really give you a number today, unfortunately.
Okay, thank you for uh for coming in again at the last minute. I do have a final question um from Marion Gerson. She's still, oh, right. Um, I don't know if you want to bring that yourself or?
Thank you. Uh, back in twenty twenty one, um, those of us on Sheldon Road. Got together a petition about the fact that the um the pavements are inaccessible for people with wheelchairs. Or mobility scooters and are very dangerous for people with mobility issues. We took it to the committee that was relevant. Um. It it progressed its way partly through there and then in July of last year, I asked a question about progress. And I got a response from councillor Alexie Diamond about the fact that uh by March, we would know, we would have all the designs. all the designs and approval for the designs and we could go ahead. Eight months later, actually, we don't have those designs. They're not existing. And I've talked to the council officers and they're saying, if we're lucky, it'll be September, October before we do. Now, I would like to know what our councillors are doing to try and move those things forward. Because as far as we're involved, as far as we're concerned, we're going to face yet another winter where those pavements are going to be inaccessible. Thank you.
Councillor Diamond?
Yeah, thanks Marion for the question. As you know, I'm on the Wasting Street team committee, I'm the Green Party spokesperson and the other members of the committee. Councillor Otten is the Chair of the committee and councillor Mark Jones is the Labour Deputy of the committee. And we did send an email fairly recently asking this same question. So I raised that in our last briefing with officers on Friday. And councillor Otten said that he would get a response to you. I just wonder, has that happened yet? Or, okay, I've got another briefing tomorrow, so I'll chase it up and get a response for you. Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you very much indeed for that. And, yeah, we now just need to deal with a bit of kind of formal business. So if I can ask members to approve as a correct record the minutes of the last meeting held on the twenty ninth of November twenty twenty-three? Agreed. Thank you, colleagues. And then I'll just very swiftly hand over to Diane Owens to give us an update on the South Local Area Committee Budget twenty twenty-three, twenty-four.
Thanks, Chair. I'll be really brief because I appreciate it's getting late now in the day. There is a finance report included in your pack and it's available online. So it just gives you details of spend agreed by the committee since the last meeting on the twenty eighth of November. So we have a delegated authority. So up to five thousand pounds can be agreed outside of meetings and it can be agreed by the Chair. So the report gives you details of some expenditure that's happened up to five thousand pounds from our budget. The report then proposes some expenditure over five thousand pounds which needs to go through a public meeting for the committee to approve it. So if I just pull out those areas of spend over five thousand pounds which we're asking the committee to approve tonight. So there are four areas of spend over five thousand pounds. One is six thousand three hundred pounds to do some work with the Low Edges community. So this is a small project to work with the voluntary community sector to look at developing a project around doing some mapping of community facilities and the infrastructure, the community infrastructure in the area and to do some, a bit of a project around looking at like building capacity and understanding that voluntary sector capacity in the area. The next project is ten thousand pounds to support Healy City Farm with their plans to revitalise and rebuild their dementia garden. Third project is six thousand seven hundred pounds to support the revitalisation of Highfield Play Area. So that will be a contribution towards some play equipment for the children's play area in Highfield Play Area. And then the fourth element that I need approval for is to reallocate fourteen thousand pounds, which was underspent from the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget. And that is to base that on allocation of three thousand five hundred pounds per ward towards some street art projects. So we've been looking at some of the graffiti hotspots in the area and looking at putting some street art murals where we can into a number of those, a number of those hotspots really, which have got issues with graffiti. So that will be a contribution towards the cost of those projects. So that's the spend over five thousand pounds that I just need to put to the committee to approve this evening, please.
Thank you very much, Diane. Can I ask members to note the updates and approve the spend over five thousand as outlined in the report and highlighted by Diane? All agree? Okay, well, that concludes the meeting for today. Thank you all very much indeed for attending and for your input. I hope you found the meeting useful. Our next meeting will be in July and we'll share the details of that and the dates once it's available. If you haven't already signed up to our South Lack Meaning list, please speak to one of the officers who can help you. If you did ask a question and you'd like to get the response directly and we don't have your details, please also speak to one of the officers who can take your details and make sure you get that. Thank you all very much indeed for coming. Have a safe.